Commissioner Roberto Babi Carrillo. Commissioner Ramiro Caballero.
Here.
Commissioner Daniel Chavez.
Here.
Commissioner Ricardo Medina.
Present.
Commissioner Itza Flores.
Present.
We have a call.
Most of the excuse, absent members?
Almost taken.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the pastor's excuse. All right. What releases and implications?
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, as we go through each day, bring the truth of your word to our minds and help us to apply your wisdom to our decisions. Thank you for allowing us to be here another day and to start the week with big news and great plans. We ask you to bless our city and we pray for positive outcomes for all concerned. Amen.
Anybody for public testimony? Public hearings? All right, under item 4A, the City Managers Report, we had some directors that attended the Texas Municipal Leadership Academy. I'm going to call them up to be recognized. We have Veronica Ramirez, Chief Juan Gonzalez, our Public Works Director Luis Marine, Ruben Rosales, Sergio Alaniz, and Adolfo Garcia. You could please join us up here. So this Leadership Academy was in Round Rock. It was two-day increments over two months that they attended. And guys, you want to share a little bit about what you learned over there? Don't be shy.
The shortest ones, right?
When it was during the training, not.
Oh, not afterwards, gotcha. One of the big things that I learned is I showed to collaborate with other cities, what their challenges are, what their victories are, and that is something that, you know, we often learn from.
Okay.
Well, thank you all for your commitment to the leadership program. Does anybody else want to share anything?
Good afternoon. Just also with what Luis said, did was able, was able to recognize that some of the challenges that are faced here in the city afar is kind of not unique to different areas as well, but are being faced by leadership in general. We're kind of were, we're taught different ways as far as in what to look for, what to, you know, different ways to maybe look at a project or a task or a problem that's being presented, and then finding a solution and answers to them. Really enjoyed also the opportunity to network and meet different people throughout the state of Texas and through other areas. The conversations were great. Also had a fun time knowing the, you know, each other a little bit more throughout, not only the class, but afterwards and sharing conversations of what we deal with day in and day out. So I thought that was invaluable to me as far as the experience. Thank you for the opportunity.
No, I just want to thank the City Manager for the opportunity. I think it was great that we were to get away and, and see what other cities are working on. And leadership, of course, you know, it's all about heart and making sure you're there for your, for your staff. Thank you.
Just kind of piggybacking off of what the other director said. We did do a lot of networking and it was just, it was really, I guess it was really neat to see how the size of FAR in comparison with all the other cities that were in attendance, you know, all the cities in North Texas and stuff. They're probably the same size, if not maybe even smaller than us. There was a lot of elected officials up there. There was a lot of, there was a lot of interesting, you know, conversations going on. And, and like Johnny says, you know, we did a lot of, you know, brainstorming and just problem solving stuff. So just to get to know the group a little bit better and, and just, you know, just glad to be a part of the team. Thank you all for the opportunity for sending us over there.
Of course. Did he go as well?
Yes.
So for me. Yes. He went. So for me, a lot of what they said is all true. But I also appreciated the fact that they kind of showed us different ways of being a leader, how to change, you know, depending on the employee. Not everybody is the same. And so for me, I think that, that outstood a little bit more is how to have different approaches to the people that are in front of you. So, and then also something that we don't get to do here very often because we're all busy with our own departments, is getting to know each other a little bit better. So the drive to and from was very short in comparison because we had a lot to talk about. So that was really, really cool.
Good. Well, we're glad you guys went. It's worthwhile investment for us to see you guys grow. And one of the things I'm sure you heard about, if you haven't, please focus on the problem, not, not the person. It's always, it's better if you, whatever you encounter, focus on the problem. Once you put that at the center, everything else starts falling in place. And always lead, hopefully you guys heard this well, not by title. You, you, you never going to win anybody or your group of friends or colleagues, or you're not going to collaborate with people if you rule, right? That, that's not the way it works. You need to collaborate. So don't lead with, with tyranny. Don't do that. But I'm glad you guys went. And Commissioner, anybody else can say?
Thought some words, you know, I went on vacation with my kids this past week and I happened to meet a director from another city. And he was saying how the great things they're doing. I'm like, well, you haven't been to FAR. They have great leadership, great directors. And I really think, just like our kids, you guys for us are, will always be the best. You guys are always working hard, doing the best you can. And your girl, it's only how much you want to grow. And I thank the City Manager for taking you guys to this venture where you guys are going to be able to learn more, get more ideas, not because they are better than you, but because we can almost learn from other people. You know, they have different perspectives than we are. They come from a different view, different race, other. But it's always good to get the best out of this training and not the bad thing. Just to let you guys know, not just you standing, but every director here in the city of FAR, to me, you are the best director we have in the city. So thank you guys.
Yes.
Well, congratulations, guys. I know you're now our TML Leadership Fellow, so please join us up here so you can take a picture with the Mayor Commission. Next, we have item 4B, recognition of our certified public managers. We had three directors attend the Certified Public Manager Course. It was a 14-month program, very rigorous program, so we want to recognize them today for their great accomplishment. They graduated a few weeks ago in Austin. So I'd like to call up Melanie Cano, Adolfo Garcia, and Kenneth Ines. I don't think Kenneth is here today. Okay.
Why does it not surprise me? It's you too.
We've got the next one coming.
Yeah, yeah. Always leading the charts. That's good. That's good.
Well, it's such a long and rigorous program, so we want to commend you all for staying the course and being a part of that and for your leadership and continued leadership for the city. So if you'd like to share a little bit about what the program was and what it meant to you?
It's a great program. For me personally, I reflected and even though it was challenging, it gave us the opportunity to really look and see what FAR is doing. And we're up there, a lot of the things that were mentioned, a lot of the challenges, a lot of the opportunities we're actually taking advantage of. So it was great for me. We got to network a lot and talk to other cities from everywhere, from Fallujah, from Brownsville, Harlingen. It was basically throughout the region. So a great opportunity, like you said, it is very rigorous. You go every month for a day and a half, give up Saturdays, but it's a sacrifice that in the long run, it helps you achieve that certification. So for me personally, it gave, it allowed me to see and see what my next challenge is and maybe my master's. So, yeah.
Well, again, thank you for the opportunity. I think it was a challenge, 14 months of just Friday and Saturday. I call it the, the reserves of municipal government because you have to go pretty much every month, once a weekend. You know, what I got from it is I got to see what other cities in the area were doing. And I think something that was different among the cities is that they were looking up to what FAR was doing as far as education or leadership opportunities. So I think that, that was one of the things that, that I saw was a little bit different in these classes.
Hope you guys picked up, you know, this is between, because you brought it up, between perception and perspective, right? Our perception is what we tend to think of where we're at and whether we're valued or not, or the promotion we did, we deserved in, or didn't, or we did a good job or not. And the stresses that come on you that, that's in your mind, right? Your minds are very, very powerful, but it can be your worst enemy also because you worry about things that may never come to light. And then the perspective of what's, you need to remove yourself from the equation and look at the big picture. And that's why we always say we're Team FAR, like, well, what's in the best interest of FAR? Not just me, right? What do I want? And when you look at it from that perspective, then things change. And that's when things start moving because it's, it's hard when it's your perception because you make it, you make it personal. No matter if you're running the department or you're in a department, and when you see it that way, it's so much harder because you, you need to disconnect and look at the big picture. And I hope you guys can see that, that when people do that, organizations do that, they totally, they excel. They move forward so quickly because everybody has the same vision of what it needs to be. And then they put the personal aside. The personal will always come, right? It, it, the accolades will always come. Don't worry about that. Just don't worry about what other people are doing. Just you keep your nose down and be consistent. And so like I told my son, you gotta be consistent in homework, be consistent. Because if you're consistent, there's no other, you can, no other option except victory. You're going to get an A. There's no other option. When you become inconsistent, that's where you change the variables. That's when you roll the dice. And that's why I would tell you guys, be consistent, stay on top, so.
And I think part of that too is that you want to be a part of the, of making an impact for the organization. And that's what stood out with a lot of these people from different cities, that they all want to be part of the impact. They want to be part of that change. So that's important too as an individual.
Yes. Good.
All right. Congratulations, guys.
Congratulations.
And Mayor Commission, we have about 10 to 12 directors that are currently going through the CPM program. And we're going to have another group going to the TML Leadership Academies. It's a continued investment in our directors so that they can better lead our city and provide good leadership to their, to their subordinates.
You know, I just remembered something that you brought it up. There seems to be, there was some misunderstandings when we, when we have, I don't know what you guys call them, apprentices or what do you call those?
Internship?
Internships. I remember that when we first started that program, even if it's minimum wage, but we pay our interns to be with us because they're taking time and some are students and everybody needs to be valued. But I need you to go back and look at that because I, that's what I recall when we first created it. So make sure that if we're not doing it, that we correct that because that's the way it's supposed to be from the beginning.
We can go back and look at that. No problem. All right, next we have Udi with City Events of Interest.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commission. Udi Gonzalez with your Office of City Communications for the record. Just a few videos, some very successful events we recently had. So the first one you'll see up on the screen, this is spearheaded under Mr. Victor Perez with EDC in collaboration with RGV College Workforce Solutions. And here's a recap of this event.
Here at FAR1 today, we're first going to start with a grant presentation, which is initiated through the workforce along with the EDC combined together to provide this type of funding for students in our college.
It is our responsibility to educate and empower the next generation so they will have a better life, so they are able to reach their full capability. Some people are limited by social problems, some people are limited by financial, but all human beings are created the same, the same potential. And in FAR, we see that that is our responsibility to help everybody elevate to the same plane. We are very proud that we can say that we help our community in many fronts.
Being a former educator, it's very important to me that we always tie in the education component to, to economic development. And so doing this today with RGV College, Dr. Palomo, and I know the great jobs she's doing with her students, but we're impacting the future. It's, it's a huge impact. I mean, it impacts not only the, the city of FAR, but the region because RGV College has students from all over. I have, we have students from Stark County, we have students from Cameron County and Isalgo County, of course. But, you know, this is really exciting and it's something that we know that we're doing the right things for the future of our students, our community, and to provide them a healthcare, you know, services that is mostly needed.
It impacts the community greatly because we do need a lot of nurses, not just here in the Rio Grande Valley, but throughout the state. And since I'm originally from the Rio Grande Valley, it's special for me to see that we're competing and doing well with the rest of the state to get citizens to have the opportunity to get not only these career pathways, to get a great job and a career, but also the citizens of the valley that they're helping because everybody needs healthcare in this area. So it's a win-win for both.
Like, I really appreciate that, you know, everyone's trying to work together to improve our future, not just nursing, but like health in general and life in general, really. You know, just keep pushing one step at a time, no matter what profession, no matter what hobby, no matter what career, just keep going, keep going. And, you know, eventually you're going to turn around, you're going to go like, wow, I did all that because these guys, I'm doing great. You're going to end up in good spots. Just keep going for it. That's all I say.
I was really inspired. And I believe they also showed this video during the EDC board meeting that just happened at 3 o'clock.
So for clarification, so this Texas Workers Commission and, and which is the big umbrella, the Techwork Solutions, right? So what they did is they recognized the institution or a program, and in this case, it's in your city, RGV College, because they're, they are the best nursing school program in the Rio Grande Valley, and that's just the way it is. And they recognize the fact that you need assets on the ground to be able to educate the next generation and more. And, but it costs, right? It's a lot, the capital, it's involved investment. But they chose RGV College because of the success of their students to give them this grant. And the EDC then partnered with them to elevate that grant to make it larger. We, but we know they not only capture residents from FAR students, right? But they capture from everywhere. That's why we said FAR is always, yes, we're leading the charge because that's what we're going to do for our citizens. But it seems to always impact other, other areas. And that's fine because at the end of the day, we're all better off with it. But they, remember, they chose RGV College because they are the best school. And so we, we also very proud of that because it's happening in our city.
Absolutely. And it was a very successful event. You saw those videos, you saw the, you know, the turnout and it was great. Everybody was extremely excited. Our second recap was the Night Under the Stars, but this was a children's edition. And this is the one that happened at the amphitheater next to City Hall. This is the first one, that's the children's edition. But I believe that with the exposure and the people coming out, more citizens and more families are now learning about these great events that we're having. And the next one, I believe, is happening at the DRC in South FAR. So, you know, that's what we want. We want to make sure that this event is moving around in different parts of the city so everybody can join us.
But Vanessa, this is your, your deal, right? So it came out very nice. You know, for this next one that happens with the kids, not the one in South Farm, sorry. You know, please reach out to the school districts because they have students that obviously are in this type of festivities, right? That they can participate with them along. We can ask, I mean, if they don't want to do it, that's fine, but we have five major school districts in our city. Then you should reach out to them so they can, and they're welcome to wear whatever banner they want for their school, but also so they can participate with these professionals.
Our next event is a promo to just remind our community that the FAR Aquatic Center is now open. The grand opening was this past Monday at noon, but we had lines around the aquatic center. Like at 9:30, we had so many people just ready to go and cool off. And so here's a quick recap that we did to just, you know, remind people that, you know, the splash in the aquatic center is ready for our community. All right, and our next video is.
You know what's surprising about that video?
What was surprising?
Anything that stands out to you on that video? Because once things stood out to me. Polaroid. I can't believe people.
Yes, that was actually created with a camera that is vintage equipment under video journalist Andy Gutierrez that got inspired in using equipment that's not modern to capture that cinematography.
A lot of us use it.
Well, you know, it's, it's one of his passions, working with older equipment just to catch that cinematography feel. Sorry about that. It's collection, collection items that Andy has.
Stop, you're digging.
Fourth of July, it's a great event that we always celebrate. So here's just a reminder for our community as this day approaches.
This Fourth of July, celebrating FAR. Join us for the ultimate Independence Day celebration filled with carnival rides, food vendors, a petting zoo, and live music. End the night with a spectacular fireworks show you won't want to miss. It's the City of FAR Independence Day Festival at the Allen and Willian Park, starting at 7:00 PM.
So this has been a tradition to host this event. Every year this event keeps growing, so we really encourage people to come out, celebrate, and just have some good fun. It's a free event and it's a beautiful park. For those that haven't been at the Allen and Willian Park, it's a beautiful park. Okay, so those events just happened. Of course, that was a promo, but the next event, this is spearheaded by CJ Sanchez with the Greater Chamber of Commerce. This is the Empowerment and Development Workshop. These are workshops that have been happening through our chamber. And so the next one's happening June 19th. The topic for this one will be effective time management. And our special guest for this one will be Dr. Esmeralda Adame. Our next event is the Skate Jam. This is the first time Parks and Rec actually has this event or hosts this event. This is really calling out our skating community. This is happening at the Park on Polk. This is a Victor Municipal Park. Again, free event. We really encourage, you know, those skaters to register. The dynamics on this one will be freestyle, so show me your moves, I'll show you mine. And we're going to have, you know, great judges out there to really, you know, highlight what they do. I feel that sometimes they feel that we're not really providing the resources or events for them. So this event is created uniquely for our skaters and our community. This is happening June 22nd from 6:00 to 10:00 PM. We'll have music and food. And we have Sedico here. There's additional questions on this event.
Actually, I do.
Yes.
Sedico, can I ask you something real quick? Sedico actually, I think it was like a year ago, he was working on this, what I'm about to ask him. On the corner of Moore Road, next to, on the east side, next to our hiking bike trail, there's a plot of land that we used to use for our gun range, remember that? And you were going to, you were going to design a bike, I don't know what you call it, sort of the bike course, remember? With the dirt and stuff? Yeah. And are you still, because that land can't be repurposed, remember? And so we have to use only stuff above ground. Yeah. Are you still working on that to make that, because your mic is a skating, skating thing you just brought up, for the BMXs or I don't know what you call it, but those kind of bikes? Are you still working on that?
Yeah, we have like preliminary, you know, renderings for that stuff. So.
Okay.
It's just, yeah, we, you know, we will go over with the, with the city managers, but we do have that. It was, yeah, it was the old, it was the old gun range.
Yes, sir.
And it was, you know, we got, I got with some skate park companies and stuff like that, just for some ideas. But we do have ideas drawn out for that, so whenever.
Just don't forget, you need a small green parking lot in there as well so people can park and get their bikes off to.
Yeah. Okay. No, it's, it's, it's in the pipeline there, so.
Okay, and then to piggyback on that, when does more, when does more get done?
More is scheduled for late 2025 to begin construction.
2025, because that's, so it'll fall in line. That's when more gets widened and there's, I think, a sidewalk and a trail. So it'll fall in line so people get there quicker, just, just so you know.
Okay. Okay. And this one here, the Skate Jam that Udi went over, weather permitting, because I know we're, we'll check with Danny right this week to see, but.
Right.
It's on schedule for right now.
Okay, boss. Thank you.
So as of now, it has not been canceled, so. And if there's.
Don't let Danny Ramirez do it because then he'll find another reason not to show up to work.
And if there's questions regarding the registration, they do have to go to the Parks and Rec office at Pepe Salinas Recreation Center and sign up in person. Our next event is Operation Chill. As you know, it's been a very hot summer, so this is an initiative under our police department to just engage with our community, treat them to a little Slurpee. So the next location will be actually June 26th from 2:00 to 5:00. And this will be at 7401 Jackson Road. This is a collaboration with Stripes and Seven, 7-Eleven. So go and get your cold Slurpee, okay? And the last event will be Movies at the Park. This, this has been a lot of fun. A lot of families give us great feedback that their children love to go to the parks where we have these with movies, with popcorn. And of course, we're going to be showcasing this classic Space Jam. I'm sure everybody's been part of this movie at some point in their life. And this is happening Saturday, June 29th. So we really encourage families to go out there and, you know, enjoy some of the amenities in some of the parks. And the next flyer is Independence Day Festival, which we just showcased the video for that. These reminders are constantly being shared on social media platforms, our website, and our city channel. This concludes the City Managers Report, Events of Interest. Thank you.
If you want to say a comment on that movies, I know the public work has some fans, so you could put ice and water to it. We can get those out there. I don't know if that's something that we do, but we don't.
Right. Item 5, Consent Agenda. All items listed under Consent Agenda are considered to be routine and uncontroversial by the governing body and will be enacted by one motion.
Do a motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Chairman, one abstention for the record.
What?
One abstention for the record.
Okay.
All right, next, item 6, 68, Consideration in Action, if any, on ordinance appointing, reappointing an alternate municipal judge. This will be for Adolfo Martinez to reappoint him to the alternate municipal judge.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? It passes.
Item 6B, Consideration in Action, if any, on resolution suspending the July 12, 2024 effective date of proposal by Texas Gas Service Company for interim rate adjustment for cities within the Rio Grande Valley service area.
Okay. Do a motion? Second? I'm checking it. Any, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It passes.
Item 6C, Consideration in Action, if any, on resolution authorizing the city of FAR to enter into an agreement with the Texas Department of Transportation to close state roadways for public events.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Item 6D, Consideration in Action, if any, on resolution declaring TASER X2 as a surplus property to be donated or sold to law enforcement agencies.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. In accordance with section 551.071 to 551.087 of the Texas Government Code, the FAR Board of Commissioners hereby gives notice that it is convenient to executive session to discuss the items listed in the public portion of the meeting agenda, the time now being 4:29. All right, we're back in open session, 5:25. Back on item 78.
Item 78, Consideration in Action, if any, authorizing city manager to enter into fee negotiations and scope of services with Sam CS from Austin, Texas to conduct inspection, testing, and construction management services for the IROG project.
Motion to table.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Item 7B, Consideration in Action If Any Authorizing City Manager to Award a Construction Contract for the IROD Project to the IOC Company from Mission, Texas in the amount of 20,000, 20 million, sorry, 969,361.
Motion to table. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? It passes.
Item 7C, Consideration in Action If Any on Acceptance of Station 30 Rehabilitation Project and Release of the Final Payment and Routineage in the Amount of 196,547.92.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Item 7D, Consideration in Action If Any Authorizing City Manager to Enter into a Service Contract with Pan American Auto from FAR Texas for Fleet Maintenance and Repair Services for the City of FAR.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Item 7E, Consideration in Action If Any Authorizing City Manager to Award a Construction Contract for the FAR Renoza International Bridge Expansion Project to the IOC Company LLC from Mission, Texas in the amount of 47,601,706.75.
Motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Do you have a motion for German?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Pass. We adjourned. Time is 5:26. Thank you, everybody.